We're live.
Thank goodness. All right. Call to order, the Webster Planning Board of sixth of May two thousand twenty-five. So we'll start with attendance, starting at that end.
John Stewart.
Adam Mark.
Marlo Herrick.
Susan Youngs.
Teresa Fettimore.
John Clark.
And Russell Tatro.
All right. So first item on here on our agenda is the driveway permit for the Billado's. Which was in the pa- it is in the packet. And that's the one we looked at?
That's the one we did the site visit for.
So, and? I'm sorry, what?
I was just gonna bring up, that was the one where we thought it was ledge, a little steep in that one area.
Yes.
Yeah.
You guys did a site visit there?
Well, when we went out to, uh...
Edison Che's property?
Edison Strive driveway, it's right around the corner.
On the seven.
Great.
Yeah, since Rob was with us, and he'd already looked at it, and we, so we went over. So?
I missed that.
Oh, that's okay. Well, it is a very steep piece of land. Well, my goodness. Let's add our attendance to two more people. Who are you?
Oh, Rob.
Well, let's keep him.
And the Lampkin. We're just starting to talk about the Billado driveway permit application. So Emmett, um, I know when we looked, we noticed that it looked like it was gonna have to be awfully steep. But we couldn't find, uh, you've been and looked at it, haven't you?
I sure did. I met with the folks, um, had a good visit with them, and we looked it over, yeah. Um, I mean, it's, it's all good. They got good site distance and everything. And the reason that I, I told these folks they needed to come talk to you is because, um, I didn't get out the measure intake, but it is more than five percent at that little bit of grade in the beginning. And for me to issue a driveway permit being more than that, that isn't the way it's supposed to be done, so they, they're here to, um, get you guys' blessing.
Yeah, I know that, that when conditions are so difficult that it doesn't seem possible to follow the, uh, the grade requirements that...
Well, there is a requirement in the ordinance that if it's above plus or minus grade, they can have it designed by an engineer or surveyor. And if it, the surveyor or the engineer can bring it into some better form of compliance, it works.
That would be better.
Yeah, it would be better. But it's just a matter of getting somebody who's, who knows the driveways and can design it right, to make sure. That's the same thing we did with the Steels. The Steels had to go get it designed.
I think we've done a...
Well, it's not only designing it, it's how much money you wanna spend in blasting and...
Yeah.
And carrying on. I mean, he's gonna build a, um, a shop up there. It didn't sound like they were gonna have a settlement system or a livable area, um...
So this is just, what, do you already have your home there?
Yes, across the street.
Across the street, okay. And then this is just for the shop?
It's a garage.
You own all three of those lots, one fifty-four, five, fifty-five, and one fifty-six?
Yes.
Um, if you went down just a little bit further, it would work, work real good. But we have a nice pipe that we just put in nice to go across underneath the road, and it's, um, then you'd have to deal with culverts and, um, and more drainage on the lower side where it would rarely work. But, um, then you're getting into a whole different story, the way the water comes down off that side hill.
Yeah.
That was my concern as well. That was my concern as well, the water coming down.
Other comments?
So, what you're saying is, where they propose it, it's got that more than five percent. But where they could put it, you would just put a new pipe that went across the street or something?
Well, you would have to put a pretty good sized pipe in there, and then it's gotta be covered. And then you have the one that goes underneath the street. So when you go to turn, I mean, there's gonna be a four or five foot hole, ten footer, you know, which, it's gonna be quite a...
But it is a shop, not a home, I suppose.
Correct.
Other comments?
I mean, we went out and looked at it when we were in that neighborhood, so we got eyes on it. I definitely see the, the grade. And the grade is always for emergency apparatus in response to, to be able to get in and out is what the purpose of the grade is for. I know you're saying blasting, but, and it definitely looks ledgy.
Yes, it's all rock and ledge, that whole area.
Sure. Uh, but we don't know if it's easy to break up, if it's solid granite at that point, or how difficult. And, and I agree with Russ as far as, with all the unknown, even you wanna know. Maybe getting some in there to do some test bits and just check and see, maybe that's the better route to go. So it's cost effective for you, and it gives us something. Even if it is a little higher than a five percent, maybe they could come down a little bit and, and compromise and be a six or seven. But until they come back with us with that information, I mean, right now it could be eight percent. I don't, I don't know what it is without measuring it, just like Emmett said.
Right, because right now it's up, but if you get that out of there to bring it down and get around the corner where the gentleman wants to build, I mean, but...
And somebody getting in there with a backhoe and scratching around and seeing, maybe?
Good luck.
So what do we want, what do we want to do?
Well, what we've done in the past, right, is if it doesn't meet the grade at face value, come back with a plan, even if it's higher, and then we've got something to work with to compromise with, I guess. Right now, it's just, we would be saying, do whatever you want. And I don't know that that's the, the case, with our specific plan. Am I off key, Emmett, you think, or?
Well, no, that's the way we've done it in the past. I mean, it's you, uh, uh, I, I work for you folks.
Yeah. Same with the driveway permit, we're the ones that have to go out and say, yeah, I admit what you said, so...
But does it matter that it's not the actual residence, that it's more of a shop?
Well, that's, that's why I, I said to these folks, why don't you come in and talk to the planning board, and maybe you could work something out where it's not gonna be a livable area and in and out of there. Um, it, it's, it's gonna be a place for him to store his, um, whatevers in there and go up there and putter on his equipment or change some spark plugs or, um...
I mean, what's your thoughts on that, Russ?
That we should recommend, um, getting an engineer's?
Hold on, hold on, I'm asking the question. No, I'm asking the question of, because it's not a residence, it's just, it's a garage, I mean...
Well, I don't think the ordinance has really defined whether the driveway goes to a residence and makes different rules for residences and non-resident areas.
Well, it's for emergency apparatus, I mean...
And just because there's an emergency doesn't mean something's gonna happen at the shop where we need to get an ambulance up there.
Because he could put a house beside the shop or sell it someday. I mean, it's, it's a lot.
Yeah, I know. Well, that's because you know how I feel. I probably should just not say anything.
And I can see, I can see your point, and I can see their point too, because these folks, two or three years down the road, say, well, had an upper Webster and put the thing for sale, the driveway's there, and, um, the shop, and the garage is there, and, and it's, it's three lots. You can combine them all together if somebody bought them all, and, but that's why I told them folks to come see you.
Can I make a comment? Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How many cars do you anticipate going up that driveway, other than yourself?
It's just myself.
Would you be acceptable to hearing some of the rational aspect? I mean, I think Emmett makes a good point, but getting some testing in there, seeing what you can do, and coming back to us sooner than later and dealing with it that way?
I have somebody to, to go in there to, to, you know, start doing a little bit of scratching to see what is underneath there already. I didn't know if that would be something I could do, and, and then we could come back.
I, I think, I think Marlo, I think we're all, I think we're all in the ball court here. And, and all of us could be in the same situation if we own land. But I'm, I'm looking at a more rational, uh, instead of just denying, and, and, yeah, I'm, I'm just an acting member here, I'm not a voting member, but I'm just trying to listen. And I think Marlo and some of the other folks here wanna see you be successful, and I think Emmett does too, but not go against our rules. But if you could do that and come back to the group, I think that would be, I don't think it would cost you a lot of money to do that. And maybe somebody might have a better idea of filling it, if that's, building it up, I think, uh, Rod made a statement, so you made some comment about that, maybe put some, some fill in there, so you get emergency equipment in there. I mean, yeah.
So I guess where these folks, before they started in, like, a lot of people would just go do what they wanted and then come. But these folks are doing it before they started digging and, um, moving the dirt. They came to get your blessing, and, um, yeah.
I, well, that's a perspective, I think, we're showing, I, yeah, to you folks.
Do we, do, Russ, do we need a formal motion?
I don't think so at this point.
Just a recommendation to?
Recommendation, uh, go out and take a look, and then when we have more stuff, we'll, we'll make a better decision when we have more information.
Yeah.
They'll also help you with the runoff issue as well. Once you get somebody in there moving things around, I'll have a better idea of how the runoff will affect that road and across the road.
Okay.
Which, um, I'm sure will be appreciated.
Okay, so it is okay to dig a little bit, too? Okay, okay.
Yeah, but yeah, go, go, do what you have to do to figure out what you, what you can do and what you can't do.
And at least know what you...
Yeah, you really don't know if it's all ledger, there is movable rocks.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and that, and it's like I said to your folks before, where you showed me where the driveway's gonna go, that's not edged to stone, you know?
Right.
Because you've got plenty of room there before your boundary.
Right.
You've got oodles of land.
Yeah.
Feet before the boundary, so you've got some wiggle room there.
Okay, that's good.
All right, everybody agreed?
Yeah.
Sound good? Any other questions?
No.
Okay, we move on?
We can move on.
All right, Edison Che corresponds. I think after talking to Russ, it sounds like what we need to do is make some very clear, um, description of what we are going, what we want to require him to do. He wants to know, for example, what do we consider, how do we want him to close off the other entrance to the property? And, uh, he wants to know what, he wants to make sure that what he does, um, is gonna meet our approval. So do we want a law, a log across there? Do we want boulders across? If we want boulders across, he wants to know what size.
So that's where he dumped the dirt?
Oh, that fill?
In before the little runoff area?
Yeah, the gravel, the rocks in it.
Why does he put the gravel on his driveway?
He said because he wanted to be able to walk onto his property. Which seems, it seems like an awfully big area for wa- for walking.
Thank you for that.
Good night.
Good night.
Looks to me like it's got a parking lot.
Yeah, we see it, we see it, 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 it as a driveway.
That's how it looks.
So, what do we want him to do to close it off? We did say that, that if, the other driveway is acceptable if it gets the paved apron. And, but we want this one closed off. So what do we want him to do to close it off?
So the other driveway you think is acceptable for?
Yeah, Rob?
Is that?
Well, that's all five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We measured the width and everything else, too.
We actually measured the, uh, the width. It's a little tight, but it's... Rob was there, and I had to tape measure, and we, seems adequate. Yep, but, so how do we want him to close off the other area?
Boulders are more permanent than a log, but...
Dirt out of there would be a lot more permanent. Move the dirt, then there's no...
It's not dirt, it's gravel.
Well, I know it's gravel, but I mean, it's like, he could still park there.
Sure.
Could still use it. If it's gone, it's going down in a hole, you're not gonna be using it.
But if he's got boulders there, he's not gonna be able to pull into it, and isn't that what we're trying to? Uh, isn't that, isn't that the pro- the purpose behind it? Is that, is it, do you only want one entrance, not, you know, two? Or am I, got that wrong?
Well, they're, they're far apart, so it's not like they connect.
Oh, okay.
It's just an extra area on, on the other side of the lot that goes in. I, I don't, I didn't measure depth, but it's quite wide.
Yeah, I would think good size, well, you know, when he's gonna move them around and if he gets some equipment there.
Yeah, I think that's key, something that isn't removable, like, pull a vehicle in today and then put it back.
So if we go by and there's a car sitting there, somebody takes a picture, I bet you guys all good with that?
If it's sitting there, it'd be on town property at that point.
Well, depends where he puts the rocks.
Yeah, well, I mean, that would be us...
He can push them.
It'd have to be past the flower area, too.
I think, I think when they place the rocks, I think we'll go down there and we'll set the stakes where they need to go, and, um...
Yeah.
Thank you.
In the decision, at least, you said the...
Measure back off the side of the, in, because there's a boundary pin right there, correct? We found the boundary, and, um, aligned with the boundary pin, um...
I think it was twelve feet, if I remember off the shoulder.
Yeah, it was. It was exactly twelve feet to the pa- to the boundary. Um, you can place some good sized rocks there, about six of them right there, and then, um, I'll go down there and put a ditch.
Yeah, you could, yeah.
You're entitled to do that.
To be, and, um...
That would take care of, uh, of, you know, any...
Remove the gravel, he could probably use it somewhere else.
So what?
So that's, that's a, that's a good plan.
What size rock? What size boulders?
Four feet.
Three and a pebble.
I agree, three or four feet of...
Thirty inches, thirty inches high.
Restore it back to originally.
He'd have to develop gravel.
Kinda what it really technically should be, be back to.
Doesn't know what you're saying, I may have seen it.
Because there's a drainage ditch there, and actually your culvert is, you put the rice there, is that correct?
Well, he...
Yeah, he changed all that, the drainage of water.
That's what I, what I think he digs.
I mean, theoretically, he could gravel his whole property.
Yeah.
That is a, so, um, all right, so...
So you're saying thirty inches around?
And that, and that Emmett will mark how far off the...
Three feet tall.
Yeah, Emmett wants thirty, thirty inches high, and it probably should be a good thirty, thirty-six inches. It's a good size rock.
Yeah.
And give him a range if you feel better. It doesn't have to be exactly thirty, but whatever.
Well, something Emmett couldn't pick up and move by himself.
Well, he's pretty strong, so he might be...
Placed within, uh, two to three feet.
Apart.
I mean, if they wanna walk between them or something, that's fine, but then you're not driving behind. In the boundary pin, I know it's twelve feet, because we measured it that day when Rob and I were down there, and, uh, we can set some, we can set two stakes and put a ribbon across, and you can put them right underneath that.
Yeah, and so can we, uh, put that in too? It'll be a proximity size?
And you wanna give him the option of, if he wants to, take all the gravel out, and he can use that as a way?
Well, he can do anything he wants.
Right, I'm just trying to say, that's one, one option. Are we gonna have any other options he can use to close it off, or just that?
What Addie said, put it right back the way it was, or put the rocks...
Or he can put it back the way it was.
Thing of it is, if you're gonna take and leave all that money sitting there, you might as well use it. The gravel, right, I mean, he could stand some more on his driveway, without a doubt.
So we could say, we're putting it back the way it was, or we just leave it out with the rocks?
Um, that's up to him, you know, whether to leave the rocks or...
Yeah, his land.
I think you're trying to make sure you have a little, some conversation with him, because he's probably even like, well, can, can I, can I, can I?
Right, because I mean, if he doesn't wanna do the rocks...
I can hear that.
And he can put it back to the way it was before.
You wanna get a negotiable conclusion would be recommendations.
Right, right, a lot, a couple of options for him, so...
Another option would be a three or four feet shrubberies going across.
Well, that's also what I brought up, is if he planted like trees in there or something. Because you can't park on top of a tree, it's just not gonna work.
True.
Wow.
All depends who you are.
I was just gonna say.
And then a year from now, the trees will come so...
And didn't he also have a question about time, his time limit?
What timeline he would have to get this done.
Yeah.
What, what is, how much time does he have to do this?
Three months?
Six days, I have a lot of...
Six days, ninety?
I don't know, he ought to be able to get that done in a month's time, thirty days. He'd probably put it in there quicker than that.
Thirty days from when?
Today.
A notice, a notice.
Yeah.
A notice, that's fine.
Sure.
You're pretty tough there, Addie.
Thirty-two days.
Well, we don't wanna be a slacker.
Well, what happens is, we put things out a long while.
We forget.
Then, then it gets skipped over, seen it many a times.
Are you gonna give him some more options in the letter, or you're gonna, I mean, there's been some very good options. You can write those, one, two, three, Emmett's suggestion, and come right, make it very clear it's gonna be returned to a ditch.
Very, that's right, exactly right. The way it should be.
Yeah, water needs to flow in natural where it went.
Yeah.
You okay, you think?
All right, so we're saying, uh, four to five boulders, two to three feet apart, then a thirty inches round and at least thirty inches high.
Or he could take it all out.
Or he could take it all out and store it to the way it was before.
Right.
Yep, and he could use the, the rock that he has put there to improve the driveway he has.
Right.
Well, the only trouble, the only trouble with digging the rock out, uh, digging the material out and not putting any rocks there.
Well, he'd still have to put the rocks there after.
Okay, all right, because if the rocks aren't there...
You could still drive in.
Yeah, all of a sudden, yeah, yeah.
So we're taking away, then you can't restore it, it has to be rocks, there's no other option.
And as Emmett says, he's gonna be ditching there anyway, so that is an additional...
So I will get rid of restoring it the way it was, that is not an option.
Not really. If he wants to remove tho- the gravel and use it elsewhere before he puts the rocks in, that's fine.
We gave him thirty days.
Thirty days from receipt of the lever, letter, or thirty days from the date of the letter?
Yeah, from the date of the letter, that makes a lot of sense.
Should Emmett be managing if the rocks are there? Should he be managing where those rocks are placed?
Yeah, he said he's gonna...
Yeah, Emmett's gonna go in and... Put a ribbon across?
Yep.
Well...
All right, sound good?
Works for me.
All right. Any other new business? Russ, you said you had some other things?
Couple of small things, other businesses. We had the notification of a public hearing for Warner of a project of regional impact. It was, was presented at the select board meeting, but I'm also bringing it up to the planning board. They're gonna be building affordable housing. I think it's gonna be about forty units.
Forty units?
Yep, in one building, it looks like forty-eight multi-family workforce housing development.
Where's it gonna go?
Uh, I believe, that's the owner, it's Route one oh three, IMET thirty-five Lot four-three. I'm not sure exactly where that is.
So that's nine?
I think it's in...
It's Act nine, and I think it's in between...
The Dunkin' Donuts, isn't it? Yeah, that's what it is, yeah. I heard about that.
I thought that was commercial going there.
No, they want more people.
Well, I'm guessing it probably is commercial, which is why it's a zoning board hearing, because they're gonna have to get a variance or a special exception to put the housing there.
When is that?
So the hearing is on, did you do, May fourteenth? That's at seven PM in the Town Hall, Warner Town Hall Lower Meeting Room.
Well, they got sidewalks all the way to there. Sorry, I always thought, well...
Partially, partially.
Yeah, partially, yeah. On the police station, McDonald's.
Still a debate about the other part, I'm sorry.
The next thing I wanted to bring up is I was looking at the legislative changes that are proposed at the state. So I know we talked last time about the statewide two acre zoning, and after looking at the law yesterday, I don't think it will apply to Webster, because it only applies to two acre lots if they're connected to sewer. Water and sewer, so that would not, Webster would be, if the law stays the same as it is currently, okay in that. So we wouldn't have to change the five acre zoning. However, the frontage requirement they put in the law is two hundred feet, instead of two hundred and fifty feet, which is what we have. So we would have to probably still go down to that two hundred feet. I just wanted to update on that. And then I looked at the Class Six Road one, and that one hasn't changed, so that's still very much going through right now.
What, what is the Class Six Road?
That means that, that they don't need to get special permission from the town to build them on a Class Six Road. So the state's just saying they can build a lot of Class Six Roads, which will create a lot of problems for this town, because there are certain Class Six Roads that are better conditions than others, some that don't exist.
What does that mean for us, though? Does that mean we have to maintain them?
No, we don't have to maintain it, but even if somebody builds out there, and there's no road out there, for example, Amherst Drive, there's, there's no road, but they would be able to get a building.
Where's that?
What?
What road did you just say?
Amherst.
Amherst isn't a Class Six Road, it was never adopted.
Right, you're right, that's...
And roads in Pillsbury Lake are not Class Six Roads.
So they're private.
Where do we have Class, Class Six?
So we do have like Chadwick Hill.
Okay, yeah.
Class Six Road, he's Chadwick Hill, the Garrish Road from Abbeys to Dingotts Corner, the top of Cluffin-Sammon...
Yep, yep.
To Roby.
Guywood.
Guywood.
Uh, is that a Class Six, or is that, that's owned by the government?
No, it's a Class Six.
Okay.
Yeah, two, two where the government is, right?
The lot I was in the other day, I saw.
And then, um, when you go up around the corner on Little Hill, what's the name of that, lol, what's the name of that trace to the left?
Dublin Lane?
Dublin Lane, that's a Class Six Road.
Is that still classified as a Class Six?
Unless it was thrown up, I know the one on the other corner that is backed down.
By Miller's, yeah.
By Miller's, that's thrown up, right, correct? Close to Gates and...
Is Pond Hill considered Class Six?
Yeah, yeah, Pond Hill, from Buckley's to the bottom of the hill.
Yeah.
Um, Westwind Village is a private road. Frost Lane is actually owned by the town.
Al, and where Alan Jackie live, what's that?
Yes, that's a, yes, that's Class Six, correct.
They already live out there, take care of it, yeah.
From the, from the Powell line to Jackie's, you're a hundred percent right.
So, if people can build on that, the town is still responsible for getting there in emergencies?
No, they have to sign a waiver.
Oh, okay.
However, I feel like, you know...
We would try to, they would...
They would, I feel like people would try to get to them anyway, if it was an emergency.
What's that go number?
Oh, I think it's, I have to look it up.
So the fact that they can build on it...
Because there's two of them.
There's two?
There's two of them.
Russ, the fact that they can build on it is one thing, but we can put things in place as far as road improvement or... And we, we must be...
The way the law works...
That's what we probably need to create or come up on our side of things, it's just...
The way the law works, all they have to do is sign the waiver. That, that, that's just, the way the law is currently written at the moment, it's just a waiver.
As soon as you touch them, you own them. If he took and put a grader on one of them, started hauling gravel, would be taken and would be responsible.
Yep, yep.
A Class Six Road, a Class Six...
Well, but maybe, maybe not, because there was, there is a loophole with the, the fire forest ranger option to get fire access, so we can maintain to get a four-wheel drive. But that's still an emergency.
Emergency lanes.
I'm just, there is something with the state forest and lands, that you can keep access to your woods.
I would worry that you're using it for another...
There's something in the neighborhood that is...
But the mine, the mine comes out of another budget, it doesn't come out of the highway budget.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying the fact that you, just because you touch it, doesn't mean we absolutely own it. If we brought it to grade, I think, or something like that.
Probably, you'd get down to the...
No, no, Addie's right.
You'd get down to the nitty-gritty, yes, sir, you put a grader on that thing.
But that's, I'm not talking about grader.
Doesn't matter, you spend one...
On it, you've, you've done work to it, and then the next thing you know, you've worked on that, and...
Therefore, yeah.
You're gonna be...
I'll try to look into that a little more, because there is, we are allowed to clear woods, make, keep trails and keep access to town forests.
The firehouse can, but not the highway.
Right. No, I know, but it doesn't matter who does the work for us, the town of Webster can, because we're providing that safety factor. It, whoever they decide does it, whether it's the fire department that goes and does it with chainsaws, or they say, hey, highway guy, because we, Chester Tremplake hooks it as a Class Six road. It goes from, geez, all the way to Haber, Massachusetts, to Allentown. But that part is closed off, gated and everything. And we sent the highway a few years back with the ranger permission to clear trees, so we can get a forestry truck through there. We, it doesn't make it a road, we didn't own it, but we had to keep access to that, because it's the backside of Bear Brook Park.
But it was gated off.
Correct.
Right, you're not gonna be able to gate off a Class Six road.
No, not now, if they can build them.
Then somebody's living there, and they got... Then somebody is living there, and they get up to Pond Hill, you get Peter Austin's place up there, what was his house on the right. That's on a, that's not a maintained road.
Yeah, I'd just be curious, what, what's the limit we can do if we have?
We don't need to touch them, is what I say, cause we start touching them.
It all comes down to once the law is passed, and then we're gonna get.
Then we'll have to.
Then a lot of it's.
Well, that's why I wanna be preemptive, and if we can interpret it and figure out things to put in place as well, I'm just speaking generically right now, it's nothing that we need to do exactly.
It's not in its final form yet, so things might.
Yeah, it might change.
Just food for thought.
Alright, and then we were gonna discuss what we wanna discuss, and then I just mean, I briefly discussed it with you, that we wanted to bring up the changes to the driveway regulations that we talked about, looking at the grade in the driveway legs for the next upcoming meeting, and I just wanted to make sure that's where the board wanted to go for the next meetings, I could prepare for it.
I'm probably the only one. Well, I'd like to see it ten percent, but.
It's certainly reasonable to discuss it again because of the way Webster's terrain is. We wanna make sure equipment can, can get in.
Yep.
But we, you know, perhaps want to relax it just a little, as long as the equipment can still access.
Which is the numbers we brought up last meeting, was the apparatus is designed for an eight percent approach. So I think the max for that to work would be seven percent, and I, you probably get the tank respect, that may have it even on that as far as the drawing, but I know engine three and two are probably the lower ones that would have the, but I believe those are only eight percent, I think that's the standard.
And we say, that's a discussion for next meeting, I don't know if you needed me to get anything before that discussion, or wanted me to get anything.
I would just, just know what some of the surrounding towns, bring some of that information, cause I think they'll find. You know, not that it makes a change for here, but, and I'm not saying I don't want people to be safe, I just, I know where I live, that's more than, I don't know, how much percentage is that? And they love it there. So, I, I'm just saying.
Anything else, I, I will not be here at the next meeting, so lucky you, I think, get to chair the next one, I'm gonna be up in Maine. Hopefully, with the daughter having a baby, so.
Good. Long as she doesn't have twins, or maybe triplets, right?
No, definitely won't, you know.
You never know.
No, they've, they've been, she's been monitored all along, cause she's thirty-seven, so.
Oh, yeah, well.
And she's doing it solo, so she needs, she needs, uh, somebody there. But anyway, so, um, is there anything else you would want to discuss next meeting? Other than that, and whatever else comes up.
No, the letters that we sent out for the court courts.
Alright, any other business, did it go to the order?
Yeah, I, I got a, I got a couple of things I gotta learn about. I'm not, I I've been here working with the planning board for eighteen years, and when I started, there, there's no faces that are here.
That's true.
And I just wanna clear up a couple of things, and maybe I'm overlooked something, or so Rob started helping with the driveways, and I, I'm not picking on Rob, not picking on anybody, but I, I just, we, we gotta get a couple of things figured out. I worked with Jerry Buckley for years, and then Craig came along, and I can remember at the meetings when a new person got in line to help with the driveways. Okay, cause way back before Craig took it I'm pretty sure you have to be a full-blown member, not an alternate, not picking on you.
Cause he isn't an alternate, is he?
Yes, Rob's an alternate, correct? Yeah, the other night, because they put
He still is.
And this young man here. So okay, so, so how it all worked in the past was, the person that worked with the driveways with me to have the authority, and I'm pretty sure this is how Craig, Craig took his hat and gave it to Rob, is that how it happened? Okay, which is all good, but if Rob's gonna do that as an alternate you folks as the board have to make it right. It just can't pass from one hat to the other, from Craig. It has to sit here, and you guys have to give him, or whoever's gonna be the driveway person, the authority to speak for the board.
I agree.
No, that makes sense.
Well, no, it does, I mean, I've, I've sat through this many different times.
I guess, for some reason, I, I didn't realize Rob was an alternate, I thought Rob was a full.
Um, so, I think a motion would make sense from the board, moving him to be that person.
Yep.
Well, do you have to be, I mean?
Or, or, how many people, is there a, a maximum size for the planning board?
There is, we can have, I believe it's five members and five alternates.
Well, so an easy way to satisfy both having it be a full-time member is, is, can we, can we make Rob a full-time member?
Well, I was gonna say, there's, currently, this brings up another point that was brought up previously, when, on a different driveway application. This process isn't reflected in the driveway regulations, where the board has the authority to appoint somebody to be its designated. And if we're doing it that way, it should be in the driveway regulations, that the board appoints somebody to be its designated, to have its authority to do that, and maybe that's something we can also discuss at the next meeting.
Next meeting.
What language we wanna put into the ordinance to make that codified, so if there's ever an issue the courts will look at it and say, it's in your ordinance, this person was designated on X date, and they have the authority. And I think during that discussion, the board could discuss whether it's only available for full-time board members, or it can be anybody on the board or it could be any way that the board decides to nominate to do that job, whether it's somebody on the board or off the board. And I think that would be a good discussion to have.
As long as it's in the, in the driveway regulations.
In the driveway regulations, cause you should leave yourself options. Say if most people on the board can't go out and do the inspections, you could appoint somebody who does have the knowledge to go do the inspections. And that's what I'm getting at.
And there's nothing currently that alludes to how that works?
In the ordinance, it's just been how it's been done since the driveway regulations were adopted. So I think that would make sense to get some sort of clause in the ordinance, and then clarify exactly how the board wants it done.
I can do the driveway stuff if that be the case, where I'm already a member, and I was the road agent for a while.
And back in the day, I was a road agent, the road, the planning board didn't do anything with the, with the driveways, the road agent did all the, that's not the finish.
Yep.
I think a lot of towns are that way.
Yeah, and then, then I don't know how it got changed to the planning board.
And that's another option too, that you can change the ordinance.
And pass it off to the road agent.
And pass it off to the road agent, that's up to.
When I was a road agent, I always used to write the driveway permits.
Because the board's authority to regulate driveways comes from subdivision regulations, the town adopted subdivision regulations. So when you look at a driveway, you're looking at it as part of a subdivision. Or say if they're gonna put a road in, and that's why we have Emmett coming here, cause if that was gonna happen, that would be a much larger discussion than just a normal one lot subdivision, which we may have to deal with when our friends from Little Hill Road come back.
Yeah.
But.
You haven't heard from them?
I have, they've, they've been communicating, I think they're not planning to come back. They're supposed to come back this year, I just don't know when. And I was wondering if they're waiting for the state to change the rules, cause if the state changes the rules, that's how the applications, it's gonna change everything. I don't know. But they have called me every once in a while to ask questions and stuff like that, that's about it.
So they designed that road already?
I am not sure, they haven't shown me any new plans.
Yeah.
But the last time they called, they were asking if the town had moved down to two acres on here, two and a half, what we discussed before. And I said, no, the town's still at five acres on me, and that was the last discussion I had, maybe about two, three weeks ago.
But we saw their plan when they came in.
I attend the same church that they do, and I have spoken to them two or three times on a Sunday morning, and the last time I talked to them, they were indicating a downsizing of the plan, and I know that, I shouldn't say it was a concern, but there was an issue with the pond. You know, the pond is a sister, and like you say, with thirty thousand gallons, or Emmett had spoken with them, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but a pond of twelve feet deep would, you know, for fire access for up there, and that was an issue, just talking back and forth, that he mentioned the pond, so I don't know if he's you know, they've gotta have, whatever they need to do, be able to find out, they can actually put a pond in with twelve feet of water before they can even make a move. But those are the conversations I had personally with them at church.
You know, I've worked with them a couple of times, they're great folks, I mean, really nice, pleasant.
They're saying we wanna move the road down a little bit, sort of disturb Fallon's land, or disturb anybody on the hill less, so. They appear upfront and decent.
Yeah, and I know Matt Fallon, Matt Fallon has come, you know, has, they've settled, I think Matt had cleared a little beyond property line onto their land over the years.
I got a full explanation for that one too, cause every time I go up there with my son, and he pulls his map out.
But it sounded like they.
Property line goes right through Matt's.
Well, that's a whole other mess I can bring up, if you wanna know about that.
Not right now, um, alright.
Chamberlain had a piece in between, that's all been settled, it's all taken care of.
So, next, next meeting, other than anything else coming up? It'll be talking about driveway regulations and whether we?
Talk about the driveway regulations, and then we can create, I can try to draft something up for
Formal language for?
Some formal language for how the board appoints who the next person is to review driveways, the road agent, or the board can discuss whether they just wanna have the road agent manage the driveways. And we can go from there. Cause I think that's a good place to start, cause then we can put it in the ordinance and then make it confirmed.
For sure.
Sounds good.
But I think Emmett needs us.
No, no, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna turn any leaves over, I just wanted to make things, if somebody was doing it, make it
Make it official.
Make it official, and, um, that's where I was going.
It's a good idea. Alright, so we still need to approve minutes, correct?
Correct.
You don't need me for that.
Emmett, you wanna sign off on the permit for Mr. Prescott?
Yes, sir.
But Sue, I mean, I know I'm trying to make a little more. Or did you just look at it?
Craig gave it to me, you acknowledged it definitely.
I won't be here next meeting.
After Craig did it, you acknowledged that you're now doing it, so, it was, it's at least.
We did at least talk about it, yeah.
I'm gonna come back for one.
But we should put something in writing, I agree with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be down, I'll stop in the bar.
An easy thing to do next meeting, cause maybe, maybe we do want to pass it off. Talking about the, the grade is a worthwhile thing to do. Alright, so I need a motion, well, we already know there's one correction that has to be made on the April first, April Fool's date.
Well, that's just an April Fool's, sure that we were on Centennial Drive.
It says it was on the Centennial Drive, that, that meeting was actually here. Other than that, does somebody want to move to approve the corrected minutes?
I'm going to approve the corrected ones.
For April first, I'll second. April first, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post.
Good thing he's not a voting guy.
Alright, and then we also need to approve the extra meeting we had on Centennial Drive, with a little detour over to the, um.
Thank you, Emma.
Bye, Emmett.
You're welcome, I'm glad I could be and help.
Always, always.
So anybody who was there like to move to approve the meeting minutes from April seventh?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Russ, catch up, any other comments or questions?
I think that's everything I have.
Alright. Actually, not, not bad.
No.
We're still in a motion closing.
I think she was talking about my crack.
No, no. So anybody wanna move to close the meeting, adjourn the meeting?
Second?
I do.
All in favor?
Alright.
Turn it off, and then I wanna hear. Yeah, I know, cause it was covered with the towel.
I've been baking all week.
I'm hungry.
Just kidding, just kidding.